Good evening. Good evening. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your cellphone and put them on vibrate. Mr. Paul O'Quinlan, Social Studies Curriculum Specialist, please introduce the individuals who will be assisting with the inspiration and lead us in the pledge this evening. He's coming up.
Go ahead, Paul. Let's go ahead.
Okay, we'll give you a couple of minutes. We'll give you a couple of minutes.
All right, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, my name's Paul Willett. I'm the Social Studies Program Specialist for the district and the Teaching American History Grant Project Director. And today, I would like to introduce to you Mrs. Laura Perdermo and Ms. Virginia Para, who is respectively our middle school social studies teacher of the year and our high school social studies teacher of the year, and they are going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I would like to just tell you a little bit about three of our district's teachers who won, who were selected by the Marion County Social Studies Council last May at the end of the school year to be our social studies teachers of the year. We have Rebecca Lynn from Bellevue Santos. Now she transferred to Legacy, but when she was chosen teacher of the year for the elementary level, she was at Bellevue Santos. She unfortunately was not able to attend the meeting tonight because she has a family obligation that she had to attend to. The other teacher of the year for middle school is Mrs. Virginia Para from Osceola. And the high school teacher of the year is Laura Perdermo from Marion Technical Institute. And I'd just like to read just a few things from their nominations. I'll start with Rebecca Lynn, who's not here. Mrs. Lynn challenges her students to always do their best. She always is willing to share resources with other teachers on campus or help plan a history lesson. She is the go-to person in our school when a teacher needs ideas for a social studies lesson. She teaches her students to think critically using research-based projects and careful questioning. Her students' final projects display a depth of social studies-based knowledge that is interesting and impressive. Many students who are not in her class have developed an interest in social studies topics just from seeing the students' work that are displayed in the hallway. Now, I'd like to talk about Mrs. Para, who, read a little bit about her from her nomination. Mrs. Para works as a team player at Osceola Middle School, constantly perfecting her craft. She works closely with the instructional coach and is constantly working to implement new strategies that will get her students interested in social studies. She requires her students to read. She has an amazing caring attitude towards her students, colleagues, and social studies in general. One of her students stated, "I used to think history was the most boring class," but thanks to Mrs. Para, I have a totally new outlook and respect for history. A parent of one of Mrs. Para's students said, stated, kind of followed up with that by saying, "You know, a teacher is great when he or she makes history come alive and is relevant to students and makes it relevant to a student who dislikes reading." And let's be honest, there's a lot of reading in history. And last person I'd like to talk about is our high school teacher of the year, which is Mrs. Laura Perdermo. Mrs. Perdermo's impact in the classroom is as prolific as her professional engagement, acting as historical figures such as Mary Todd Lincoln, conducting historical simulations such as having her students experience the working conditions during the progressive era and exploring document-based inquiry lessons on the civil rights movement. Miss Perdermo unites interactive instruction with stellar audiovisual lectures punctuated by physical props, primary sources, and even the occasional original rap song. Students, past and present, remember her study guide rap songs on topics like the Great Depression, all written and performed by Mrs. Perdermo, parodying the most popular music that our students listen to. Outside the classroom, Miss Perdermo's work in building the Marion County Social Studies Council, which offers quarterly dinner lectures featuring highly acclaimed historians and historical figures, so this will continue to benefit social studies community in the future. These three teachers were recognized for their outstanding service this October at the Florida Council for the Social Studies 56th Annual Conference, which was held in Daytona Beach, Florida. And the Marion County Social Studies Council is proud to have them represent our district as examples of excellence in social studies instruction. Each of these teachers exemplifies how the best educators always put our children's welfare at the top of the priority list. And it is in that spirit, on the 150th anniversary this month of the Gettysburg Address, we have chosen some inspirational words from our 16th President Abraham Lincoln regarding our children and the critically important job in educating them. And Mrs. Para is going to read Mr. Lincoln's words.
A child is a person who is going to carry on what you have started. He or she is going to sit where you are sitting, and when you're gone, attend those things which you think are important. You may adopt all of the policies you please, but how they are carried out depends on him or her. He or she will assume control of your cities, states, and nations. He or she is going to move in and take over your churches, schools, universities, and corporations. The fate of humanity is in their hands, and that's what we believe in. Thank you.
Yes. Mrs. Para, you were the teacher of my children, and I have spoken about you through the years to so many people. There's teachers that stand out in a mom's mind, and I always, I remember Major saying to me one time, when Blake had you five years later, "Now Blake, you better do your homework because Miss Para does not take any excuses. She is serious about this," because I've tried giving her all the excuses and she didn't take them. And then Blake comes along, and I don't know if you remember this, but you called me for a consult because Blake wasn't really doing his work. And we went in for a consult, and you said, "Now, Ms. Stacy, I'm going to give him a chance to make some of this up, to get this done." And I remember looking at you saying, "But Mrs. Para, that's not your image. You don't give him a second chance." And I remember you looking at me and saying, "I know it, but Blake just makes you want to help him." And so Mr. Tomlin knows Blake, and a lot of people know Blake, and Blake does make you want to help him, and he still makes people want to help him, and he's doing great. But I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for being the teacher that you are and expecting excellence out of your students because you truly did. Thank you.
I remember both of the boys, and I think that's what's important, to set expectations high for every student that we have. And when they make the effort, give them that opportunity to redeem themselves because that's what life is all about, learning from your mistakes and fixing them. And that's what I still do today. So, thank you so much for your kind words, and thank you for remembering me.
I will never forget you because you set such high expectations, and the students understood that, and they passed the word down to their siblings about you. So, you know, I think they'll always remember you also. Thank you.
Once again, I'd like to congratulate you at being part of our staff and part of our school community, because I know how important social studies is in history. That's what's one of the degrees I got my undergraduate degree in, so thank you so much. Thank you for the inspiration and pledge. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations again, too.
Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, with the exception of item C-10, which has been withdrawn entirely from the agenda, I recommend approval of the agenda for the November 26, 2013 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Ely, second by Ms. Borton. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Brenda, you're going to have to put mine in there. Mine went off for some reason.
Mr. Crawford, your vote's not recording.
No mention about the item that I pulled from the superintendent's recommendation?
That comes in the consent agenda. It's withdrawn from the consent agenda.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yes, sir.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October 22, 2013 School Board Meeting? May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
It was motioned by Mrs. Borton, second by Mrs. Ely. Are there any additional corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Add mine until I can get back up, Brenda. Aye. Ms. Kathy Trammell, Safety School Community Liaison, Student Services, here to present the winner of the Red Ribbons School Spirit Contest.
Well, Mr. Trammell looked a little... I'm not Kathy Trammell, but I can fill in in a pinch. Thanks for letting us come tonight. I've got some special guests that I'll ask to bring up here in just a moment, but first, let me remind the board, Red Ribbon Week is a week that we celebrate our anti-drug message, and it's a wonderful week. We have all of our, many of our schools participating and having different contests and showing lots of school spirit. And so tonight, we're here to recognize those winners. The Red Ribbon Week took place on October 23. There was a kickoff at Ocala Police Department. I saw our superintendent there. It was well attended by students and schools and various community agencies and continued all the way through October 30. That Friday, the 27th, we had our spirit contest. So, there were various members of Student Services, and we went throughout the district to judge the schools and determine those schools that had the greatest spirit shown for elementary, middle, and high school. I'd like to mention our honorable mentions first. We had honorable mention Evergreen Elementary, Horizon Academy, Liberty Middle, North Marion Middle, and Marion Technical Institute. This is always a challenge, schools really, and the students go out of their way, their classroom teachers go out of their way to celebrate the message of being drug and alcohol and tobacco free. However, we have with us tonight three of our winners. And so first, I'm going to bring up Dr. Jordan, and Dr. Jordan is a friend of ours from the Children's Alliance and helped sponsor this event and supports this event, and we're very thankful for everything that he does with here partnering with the school system. So, first, okay, here are our winners, and I'll call up our elementary winner first. We have Bellevue Santos Elementary, and here to picked up the trophy for Bellevue Santos is Mrs. Forsythe. Terry, congratulations. And let's see, this is your school's second year in a row that you've won this. So, congratulations, y'all.
You had to get bigger and better.
Our middle school winner is Fort McCoy Middle School, and here tonight is Mr. Hearn, Mike Hearn.
I got all my instructions from Ms. Forsythe.
Well, I was at Mr. Hearn's school.
Got to lighten this place up a little bit.
We walked the campus, and it's a large campus. We looked at the elementary, middle school, and various classrooms and activities, and it was a lot of fun. I enjoyed being on your campus, Mr. Hearn. And last but certainly not least, we have Vanguard High School. Congratulations to Vanguard. And here to accept the trophy is Paige Stevens. And Vanguard, I believe, this is two out of three years that Vanguard has brought home the trophy. So, a lot of fun. It was a wonderful showing of your schools and a very, very important message, and we thank you for all the support. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jordan to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Viennella, and I will be brief. As you know, the Children's Alliance took on the Community Council Against Substance Abuse, which is our county drug coalition several years ago, and our partnership with you all has been most important to us, and we had really our best year, I think, and we've got more activities planned this year than ever before. The reality is that it's estimated that 60 to 70% of adults who become addicted to illegal substances, it occurs, it starts within, in elementary and high school and middle school, primarily middle and high school. So, it's really critical that we get to the kids before their brains are fully developed and they make these foolish decisions. And so you're opening your doors to allow us to have these kinds of events, as well as SAD Clubs, and another event that's going to occur in January throughout the week to, again, to bring to the kids and the youth the facts and fictions about substance abuse. All this is good, and we thank you for your help in making this a reality in Marion County. So, thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Dr. Dunn.
Mr. Jordan, I wanted to ask, what constitutes, is it just Mr. Viennella who goes around to look at the schools, or do you go with them?
Well, it varies year to year. This year, they had their own team. The year last year, we sort of had a community team, so we're pretty...
And it's all visual, what the classroom doors and stuff?
Yes, we have, like good teachers, we have rubrics. We go out and we judge each school based upon the rubric, and then the various groups come together and we compare those and decide the winner.
And I'd like to say, Mr. James, I'd like to say something. I'd like to thank Dr. Jordan. Dr. Jordan and I have been friends for, can I just...
Thirty-eight years.
You know better than me. I was trying to figure it out. I love him, and I think that he's great, and I appreciate all you do. You have just retired and just outshined everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thirty-eight, no.
No, I know, I know how important this is for our school district, and Dr. Jordan, I see you on our tour so many times, and again, it's important that we recognize these are the things that affect the lives of our students, and these programs that we're talking about here are so important. And I appreciate you guys embracing the idea of winning it two and three times in a row. That means you're doing some neat things at your school. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
May I have a motion to adopt the updated District Safety and Loss Prevention Manual? May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Crawford and was second by Mr. Borton. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, the District's Safety and Loss Prevention Manual complies with federal and state safety, health, and environmental mandates, and is updated every two years to assist in providing a safe and healthy environment for students, employees, and all who visit district facilities.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the Safety and Loss Prevention Manual? Seeing none, call a question.
Question.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item C-10, which has been withdrawn entirely, and C-10, scheduling of charter schools, which has been withdrawn entirely from the agenda, and item C-21, insurance consultant, which has been placed on the regular agenda for discussion. May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Crawford, and it was second by Ms. Borton. May I have a motion to approve amendment number two?
Got to vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry. May I, all in favor of previous amendments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Got ahead of myself. That's okay. The motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve amendment two to the original agreement for Employees' Health Benefit Consulting Service with E.W. Schultz Associates Incorporated, ADB, Schultz Insurance Consultants of St. Petersburg? May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Mr. Crawford, you withdrew this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, you know, we, and I'm sure you're all aware, we periodically will hire outside experts, consultants, if that's what you want to call them, in areas that we may not have all of the information that is necessary to make a good decision. But after a while, you have to cut yourself loose, and hopefully, your people have learned what it needs to know to be able to bring this information to the board. You can see here tonight that this is, you know, we've already amended it, I believe, two times. This is the third time that we would be using the services. I don't know how much more is going to change in healthcare in the next year unless there's a change in the gentleman sitting in the White House, even if the one political party forces out the other party and takes control of Congress, unless they get a two-thirds vote. We're not going to undo what is currently under the Affordable Care Act. We know what the policies require. I mean, they're very, very clear of what has to be done. We never seem to get away from the insurer that we constantly use, so I'm not quite sure why we need this area of expertise when I would hope by now our risk management department was fully up to speed on this service that, or that we provide, the insurance services that we provide to our employees. So, I think this is just a real waste of money. There's no other way to describe it, and I think we need to vote this down.
Ms. Stacy?
Do we have any idea how much we pay for this service this year?
We pay $200 an hour for the senior.
Right, but I mean, how much have we paid? Like, how many hours do they serve us? Should we maybe table this and come back and look at it possibly and see what we're spending?
I was going to suggest that, too, Ms. Stacy. Not, but based on some other information that I would like to hear from that department, too, Mr. Crawford, to see, to ask them some questions on how, you know, how informed they are. I do believe they are there, like you do. I do believe they can perform the service much better in most cases, but I would like to see, table it tonight, too.
Okay, my question is, are there anything time-sensitive here, Mr. Superintendent?
I believe we're okay right now. Kathy Gordon with Cyber, as you know, will come back to us, and we do have some scheduled work sessions in reference to health insurance in the springtime. We, as you know, we're exploring things. We know the Affordable Care Act is giving us some challenges. We're exploring possibility of self-insurance. Remember, I handed out to you just last week?
Right, right.
We're exploring the possibility of partial self-insurance. We're looking at clinics and things like that, and I know we have some workshops scheduled in the spring for that, of which Mrs. Gordon will be participating, should you choose to continue having her as our consultant.
It's on the table that we table it until we have another workshop to bring the people in. Is that what I'm hearing here?
And to find out how much we're paying them.
I have some data, if you're interested in that data. We, Mr. Chairman, this is historical data to date. We went into an agreement or a contract with this consulting firm, I believe, in January of 2012, and these are the figures that I received this afternoon, and I wasn't sure why Mr. Crawford had pulled this, so I just got some information. In the first six-month period, and again, I was not here at that time, Mr. Crawford, you would remember this better than I, of course, from January of 2012 to June, there was a $45,000 and some change consulting fee. For the entire next 12-month period, from July of 2012 through this past June, there was $22,085 allocated to the cyber firm. And then since July, since July of this year, $11,620.11. I don't know whether that's on par for the second year. It looks like it is because he was essentially spent six months' time with her, and she's not scheduled to come back until the springtime.
Okay. I have a motion. I need a motion for it to be tabled, and a second.
I'll make a motion to table this. It's not a lot of money like I thought it might, could be, but when we're looking for every little bit, we really don't know what our situation's going to be upcoming, and we really don't need the service for a while. To give us a little time to, like, sit back and think about this, I'd like to make a motion that we table this for tonight.
Until December 10. We usually set it for the specific day, December 10 would be the next week.
That would be...
That would be fine.
That would be fine. That's our next workshop.
Next board meeting.
Okay, I have a motion.
We need to talk about it, though.
And I think we need to get Ms. Lively in here as well to...
I'd like to get with Ms. Lively, and I'd like to have a little talk about it at one of the workshops, because it wouldn't help me to table it and then come back with no knowledge on the 10th and vote again.
Table it to January 14, so we have a work session in between.
Okay, thank you, Brenda.
Okay, January 14. I need a second on that.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been tabled. Mr. Crawford's motion, well, Ms. Stacy's motion has, to table, has been seconded by Ms. Borton, and we're scheduling a meeting for January 14.
Schedule a work session for January 14. Work session for January 14. With a number of other topics on December 12.
Okay.
January 14, return to board meeting.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion passed. Motion passed five zero.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, and maybe perhaps I ask Mr. Crawford or Ms. Stacy, been most vocal about this issue, as we prepare for that work session, what information, data, persons would you like for me to have? I can certainly have our risk management department here. I don't know who else you'd like to have with us, or do you just want to have the discussion yourself as a board?
Well, I'd like to know, you know, you've given us the money that we've spent and like to speak to our staff to see, you know, what's upcoming, just, you know, if we can talk a few minutes, and, you know, we may come back and we may support it. I just feel like we need to talk about everything that concerns us a little bit.
Okay. We'll have members of the risk management staff available for you.
Mr. Tomlin, I'm on the insurance committee. Yeah, I'm representing the school board, and I know Ms. Lively has talked to me at great length about how she could never survive without Kathy's help because she does all the homework, you know, and the research with the different types of health insurance plans. So getting Ms. Lively in here to talk to us the way she talked to me, I think will give us a better understanding as to, you know, what she, what her job is and what she has Kathy do, you know.
And then at least if we support it, we'll know why.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do it. Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the following donation? $2,000 to Forest High School from Lockheed Martin. $1,203.88 to Marion Public School Homeless Needy Children Fund from the Ocala Marion County Association of Realtors. $2,500 to Osceola Middle School from their business partner, Reed Arthur Donnis, via the Public Education Foundation. $1,000 to Vanguard High School from Eddie Wood Stable LLC. $1,500 to Vanguard High School from Paul L. Urban, M.D., and Joyce K. Urban. May I have a motion and a second? Moved by Ms. Borington, seconded by Mrs. Ely. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Okay, Mr. Crawford, would you do the honor of thanking us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm delighted to do it. You know, we always talk about, you know, the support that we have in this community from the, for public education, and I think this is another example tonight of that support. Contrary to what you may hear from some people, the overwhelming majority of people do support public education. They send us our children every day. And frankly, it is public education that's probably been the great leveler in this country between races and, you know, whatever groups there may be in educational levels. So to all those people that want to continue to support public education, I say thank you tonight. These gifts will be greatly appreciated.
Meeting reminders. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, December 12, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss the final revision to the board policy 8.54, naming and renaming of facilities, various board policies regarding leave, assessment data, and determining a legislative agenda. In addition to, in addition to an attorney-client session being held this evening is to discuss pending litigation on the executive session to discuss the ongoing union negotiation will also be held. I will ask the board, I will ask board members for their concerns. Okay, I'll start with Mrs. Stacy.
This week, I've done, I've worked with our textbook company, our textbook department, and because of the concerns of Common Core and some of the content in the textbooks, I requested that she, I, well, let me start over. I contacted our textbook department and asked them where we were on textbook approval. And they said that we had done a preliminary approval of our middle school books and that we had whittled it down to 10 or 12, from 10 or 12 publishers down to three. I asked her what the publishers' names were. One of the publishers is the same publisher that published the controversial book that we were speaking, Pearson, that we were speaking about earlier. So I asked her if there was a way I could obtain those books, to read through them, and she said that they would be coming back up, they've done the initial review, they would be coming back in January to do further reviews. And I said, well, is there any way I can get it online? And so she was really kind. She said, let me see if I can get those books. So she contacted Pearson, and she got me the three middle school books. She got me the, and it is Common Core. These are Common Core-aligned books. And she brought me the sixth, she got me the sixth and the seventh, and great, she got me the eighth-grade book, which is great because it's a teacher's edition, which kind of helped me a lot. I have read all three of these books in a week. I have not slept a lot. I have read these books front to cover in a week. Thank goodness we had a light board agenda. And what I have discovered in reading the books is that the second, the sixth-grade book is pretty harmless. It kind of goes into some, some things that concern me for 11-year-olds to be reading. It talks about a school, you know, we have in here some information about a school fight and some stuff that I really don't think we should be glorifying fights in our schools in one of the stories, but I think it's almost like the textbook company, where are you coming from with a story like that, where there was no punishment or anything, when, you know, we don't go along with that? But there was a story in there about that. But I think what concerned me the most was the section where it was on, I guess, page 760, where it began to talk about mythical gods and a lot of myths and things, and a lot of stories about gods and how that's a myth, and I was okay until I found an independent reading suggestion that they had over in the column, and it was a book called Myths and Stories from the Americas. Well, I had gone online to the, a teaching program, a teaching website, that actually is for teachers to go to for Common Core lessons, and it showed this teacher, and she said, we're starting our Common Core lesson today on the Bible and myths. And there's this little boy laying on a table, and he's being, you know, getting nailed to the cross, but the, my point is that the lesson was combined religion with myths. Well, this book, and I haven't ordered it yet, but I'm going to, that is recommended in our sixth-grade reading book, says, "Myths and Stories from the Americas," and the book's content is described as, "This collection of myths and folk tales includes stories of creation, tricksters, love, and adventure." I don't really think my religion is a myth. So I will be looking for that. As I dug down, I'll give you a real quick look at the seventh-grade book. Oh, and another thing, on page 165 in the sixth-grade book, it had a nice little story, model story, a reading model, and it says, "I hate a song that makes you think that you're not any good. I hate a song that makes you think you were just born to lose," and goes on. And yet, every single story in this Pearson book, when it talks about black Americans, everyone's a victim in the world except the Caucasian. Everyone's victims, and just wedges and wedges and wedges are driven between, you know, the different kids and the different races and things in our schools, and it comes from a lot of that kind of stuff right there. On the seventh-grade book, the big political, political point, agenda in that concerned me a lot. As I got into the book, because I do have great recall and I have great comprehension from my teachers that taught me reading when I was a child, I saw in the beginning, it was like in the very early part of the introduction, it was LI, and it's some definitions, and it talked about socialism, and it defined socialism. And then it goes off into the column, and it says, "It explains socialism stresses the community rather than the individual." Okay, that's fine. So as I'm reading along at 4 o'clock in the morning, I get to Unit 5, the very, very back, and I find a whole section that says the big question, "Community or Individual? Which is Most Important?" There continue to be 147 pages that follow the big question, leading children to believe. Really, if you read it, honestly, if I read it, I would look at socialism too, the way it was portrayed, because on page 630, it sets, on page 630 in the seventh-grade book, it starts out with an asterisk, explaining social, you know, the individual or the community. "A school rule that students do not believe is fair." Is that, is that an individual issue or a community? It sets you up, a situation in which one family member does not want to do something that the rest of the family is doing. Makes it sound like the individual's rights really are not that important. And it kind of goes on like that. And as I read through it, again, I got back to the same stuff that we got, had a lot of talk about, the myths. There was on one page, there was an author, and the author was over in this little box, and she was described, and she did, she had written stories about, and figures, and non-fictional stories about using figures in the Old Testament, you know, different individuals in the Old Testament. And then off to the other side is a whole thing about myth discussions, talking about myths were recreated, about stories that explain natural occurrences and beliefs about right and wrong, and they have human traits. This myth thing and religion is very, very concerning to me as a board member. And as we read about this stuff in the seventh-grade book about socialism, there's no mention of Governor William Bradford's writings, who was one of the first, was actually our first governor in the United States. He was governor of Plymouth, Mass. He was the pilgrims' governor, where communism was our first form of government, that the pilgrims tried. It failed miserably. Everyone nearly starved to death because some worked and some didn't, and it was a disaster. This country has already gone the communist route before everyone, anyone ever heard of Karl Marx. But anyway, I go on to the eighth-grade book. The eighth-grade book, on page 40, was the wackiest story I've ever seen. It's called, "Who Can Replace a Man?" The gist of the whole political message in this book was that the world would be better without humans. The message was that humans are disposable but not useful because they made these machines turn into humans, and then when the machine broke, they just cast him aside, and they said, well, we're not going to fix him, he has no use to us anymore. The story talks out, starts out talking about man died because of diet deficiencies, they destroyed the earth. You know, it's this thing about, you know, the horrible, horrible man. Then you get to, on page 195 of the eighth-grade book, tells a total, complete lie about the Constitution. Complete lie. Says, "All the people" did not mean all the people. It just meant the ones that could vote. Nowhere in the Constitution does it say a word about all the people meaning just the ones that can vote. So I went over into some of Frederick Douglass's writings, who was one of our most well-known slaves, who was probably one of the most politically active slaves of his time, and read his writings where he said, "The Constitution is an anti-slavery document," and that he also warned us clearly, he says, "Beware, in the future, people will take the Constitution and will tell you what it intended to say. It will not tell you what it says, and people will try to say intent." Frederick Douglass lived at a time closer to the Constitution writings than any, than this textbook company, and he said clearly that it is not so. You know, I think about what Dr. Ben Carson says. He says, "If you want to destroy a nation, the best way to do it is to divide the people. Divide the people and throw it into disastrous debt." That is what is happening to America, and it concerns me, and the political motives. There's another story at the very end of this eighth-grade book about the storyteller on page 92, Mr. Tomlin, the storyteller. It teaches children to be disrespectful to their relatives. The children were being sassy to the aunt who was trying to tell them stories, and they were basically saying her stories were dumb. And this gentleman that overheard it, they were on a wagon or something, or like a train or something, and he overheard the conversation. And he begins telling stories to the children that they liked better than what the aunt was saying. So he gets on with his story, and the very end of the story, they say, Bertha, because Bertha's this real good, he tells a story about Bertha, she's really nice. She's so nice that this prince allows her to go into his garden, which no children ever get to go to. So she gets to go into the garden, and she's all excited, and she, and a wolf comes along and eats her in the garden. There's some stuff that goes on before that happens, but the moral of the story is the wolf eats her. On, and then on page 97, in the teacher's edition, it's saying kind of what the story that the kids might get gleaned from this story. The children may respond, in the teacher's edition, it says this, "It shows that being good is not necessarily a winning strategy." This kind of stuff in the minds of 11, 12, and 13-year-olds in this Common Core book that has made our top three possibilities out of the 12 is very, very concerning. On page 134 of this book, it talks about the Vietnam War, and it is very politicized, this little story that they made up, where they talk about two conclusions. There's a test that's kind of given, you know, suggested test to be given. The story itself basically makes, if you read just that and you don't know anything about the Vietnam War and you answer the questions, it's kind of like what the teacher's philosophy is. If she was pro-Vietnam, she can make it this, and she can get the right answers out of there, or if she was opposed to it. So it's kind of what the teacher says, it's kind of what the response is. So anyway, the federal government has done plenty to destroy the family unit without us being accomplices to destroying our children and families through our public schools. Thank you.
Ms. Ely?
Okay, I have some different information to share with the public, with our parents. I want to encourage parents, if you have questions and concerns about your, the school your children are going to, please get involved in the school advisory council. That's just like one of the best places that you can voice your opinion and get your questions answered. I went to four SAC meetings since our last meeting, and I want to celebrate the success of what's going on in these schools. I mean, some great things, and you'll learn more about your child's school by going to these meetings. First one, Bellevue Middle School, they are starting a National Junior Honor Society, and they're working hard to get that started. And what a great way to get kids involved in academic success and achieve those successes in middle school. Lake Weir Middle, they are offering really some neat dances and awards and all kinds of incentives for not just academic achievement but for attendance. They're trying to get their attendance up, so they're offering these dances, and the kids are apparently really very excited about it because they don't get to do anything like that. Stanton Weersdale, very, very excited. And Harborview, they both received letters from Governor Scott today for being outstanding Title I schools. Stanton Weersdale was 75th out of 648, they were in the top 5% of the Title I schools in math last year for FCAT, and they were in the top 3% in science, and that's a Title I school. Stanton Weersdale, congratulations, I'm proud of you. And I have a pencil from Stanton Weersdale principal for all of you. Don't let me forget to give it to you. Also, Harborview did get the same, similar letter with Governor Scott's signature today, and they were the top 5.8% in math, and they were celebrating the Title I schools. But with the letters personally signed by Governor Scott, the principals are very excited, and it's a way to celebrate success and to also thank their teachers for working so very hard, because I know, as a former teacher, how the struggle you have all year long to teach the skills that you need to teach and make sure that those kids are successful. But get involved in your SAC meetings, parents. Thank you.
Ms. Borington?
I have two things. What is, I share the concern of the books, textbooks, and we've had the Tea Party members and the Republican Party come before us earlier today about their concerns, too. So I want to recommend that we have a workshop that we hear from that department on how, just, you know, for the public, so they'll see how we select books, and I mean, I recommend that it's something we should do, and that we discuss it, have open discussion and dialogue, you know. So that's the one thing. And I want to say something that I found earlier tonight, in our untelevised part, there was a gentleman who, and I know him quite well, but he made a threat against me, and I find it that I really want to say something to the public, because for the past year, I've been like in a hostage situation in my home, and someone had already, you know, really threatened me to the point that I did... you know, really threatened me to the point that, um, I did go to the police about it, you know? And I don't take lightly when someone threatens me again, and I just wanted someone to know that it was made here tonight. During the past year, Mr., when Mr. Yancy was, he was aware, and he made sure that I was, you know, stable, and then you can see how much weight I lost. But I wanted to bring it to your attention, that that has happened, and that I did have a threat earlier here today that I can't take lightly because my life has already been threatened. And I just wanted to say that, and I don't want to, uh, answer too many more questions, but I have talked to the police chief. He knows, he's totally aware, and he, he, he keeps me guided, me along the way. So, um, just, I just didn't want to have that threat before me and not say anything, anything more, and make it public that I don't take it lightly, and I wish with respect that he would take his threat back. If he wants to take me out politically, that's his, um, um, that's his prerogative, but don't make a threat to me that it's, you're going to single me out in the board and, and threaten me. Thank you.
Mr. Crawford.
Oh, thank you. Um, just to pick up on a point that, uh, you know, Ms. Boynton mentioned about the fact, we had some people here tonight, um, to, to speak, uh, to us, and, and that's what we're, we're here for, and I'm delighted to see everybody that did come down, um, because a lot of nights we don't get anybody. So it's, it's nice to see somebody, and I have no problem with people expressing their opinion. The, the one thing that, that concerned me was several people tried to paint with a very, um, broad brush, um, assuming that everybody on the board is of like mind on every issue. We were even accused of, of wanting nothing more than, um, the money. Well, I, I take some offense to that, due to the fact that I pride myself over the years of being on the board of trying to make sure that we didn't ask the public for more money than we actually needed to run the school system the way the state of Florida mandates that we run the school system. I was, I, I thought it was also interesting that, you know, it was, I guess implied that everybody sitting here was in favor of the Common Core. I thought that was humorous, due to the fact that it's quite, um, I think, well-known. Obviously, apparently in some groups, it's, it's not. Um, but I'm not a supporter of the Common Core for a very simple reason, and I make no bones about this. In every place that I, that I, I speak, if anybody asks me about it, I, I tell them, I said, "Great concept. The thought of having a child in Montana on the same level as a child in Florida learning algebra or whatever, the, great idea." The problem is that, in, in my opinion, this will be the last step for the federalization of education in this country. And there is nothing that I can find in the Constitution that says that the federal government is supposed to be involved in education. So I am a little, little concerned about this. Ms. Stacy, I, I, um, agree with you on concerns on some of the stuff that is in the, uh, in our textbooks. Uh, there was a book that was mentioned this evening, uh, which I have had, superintendent can tell you, Deputy Superintendent Mr. Langford can tell you, I've had numerous discussions with them about that book. I have sent them information for, that I've obtained, uh, you know, about that book. I actually asked for a copy of the book months ago and got it, read it, um, and then I actually had two other people read it, just to make sure that I was not wrong in, in what I saw in there. And I didn't even tell them the areas that I was concerned about. I wanted them to read through it and see. They came up with two of the three areas, both of them, uh, came up two, three. There was, there was one area which I, I thought was interesting, nobody has picked up on, and, and I'm trying to figure out why this particular section was even in a history book. Um, so maybe to add to the, the price of the book, because they could add another 50 pages, and they could go from $80 to $90.
They need to fill some space.
They could be. You know, but it's an 800-page book, if I remember the, the, uh, the council, I don't know how much more space they needed to, uh, but I just would, would really encourage everybody that does come on, to come and speak to the, uh, to the board, is, um, please do your homework. Don't paint with a broad brush. Uh, try to find out, if possible, if there, if, if members of the board have expressed an opinion, please, you know, relate to that opinion. If you disagree with them, that's fine, okay? But at least have the, uh, to do, please do the due diligence, and, and, and don't come down here and, and, you know, and make some of the comments that, that were made. And I didn't reply to any of them, because like Mr. James, I was trying to make sure that we got through everybody who had signed up, uh, and I wanted to make sure so. Thank you.
Can I say one thing to you?
Yes, ma'am.
Pearson, it's kind of ironic for me that Pearson just bought out my daughter's company, Smart, well, company she works for, Smart Thinking, and, um, I was like amazed that she doesn't want to work for him, you know? She's like, "I'm looking for another job now, Mom," you know? So it's kind of ironic that they are moving, branching out into the college arena.
Because it's going to be national.
Mm-hmm. They're already branching out.
Ms. Morrison? Brenda? Mrs. Superintendent.
Just a few things, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Just to report to you that this morning, we did have a bus accident. We don't report minor fender benders to you, but this one was a little more significant. An automobile ran into one of our buses as it was slowing down. I'm happy to say there were no injuries either to the passenger or the driver of the automobile, but we had absolutely great responses. We always do it from law enforcement, our own transportation department and risk management department to investigate that. All of our students are safe. Most of them got to school. Some did not want to go to school after that issue, but that, it was, it was, it was, as well as things could work out. You're going to hear more on January the 14th, but I wanted to give you a little briefing here. We did receive our verbal exit audit from our audit that just concluded. This is auditing Mrs. Boston Ellis's department's books and our transa-, financial transactions from, uh, 2012, 13, at the audit year ending June 30th. So we're very pleased with that, and you'll hear what I think is a good report at the January meeting. We have also opened, or will soon be opening, our fifth PASS site, that's Positive Alternative to School Suspension, district-wide in-school suspension, if you will. It will be at Lakewood Middle School. Mrs. Calloway, uh, the principal there had an in-school suspension unit already staffed for, and she has gladly opened it up to, for other students to, to, uh, be assigned there also. Uh, fourthly, something I'd certainly like to share with you is that we talk an awful lot about industry certification. We know we have graduation requirements and credits and things like that, but we have a four-year history of, of industry certification at this moment in time, and I'm glad to share with you that two students in Marion County over the last four years, we have offered, and because they have earned 2,081 industry certifications. These are, some are simple certifications, some are much more lengthy, but they empower the student to go on and be certified to apply for specific jobs here in Marion County, and I'm very proud of those. All of our schools participate in that, all of our high schools, and certainly MTI. Actually, MTI has the highest percentage because they have the smallest number of students there. And finally, certainly a happy Thanksgiving to everyone here on the board and to, and to the viewing audience also, and for our children. I'm sure this, and Mr. Crawford heard me say this this morning, and as a special note of appreciation to our parents, we'll be glad to give your children to you for the next three days this week. But thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, boss of your dough, this is my first, um, board meeting, and one of the things I just want to share with everybody that's listening, and I would like to also share with my fellow board members. One of the things that, uh, we have is the school system that work. We need to, uh, we need to fine-tune it on some things that we, that we, uh, deal with in terms of our school system. When I say that, let me just say this. We have a textbook committee, and I would love for us to really get with the textbook committee and make it work sessions together so we can have a, a good, solid program when we go through. When I heard people out here, you know, just yelling, uh, not, speaking to the board, it just made me know that they are not aware that we have a system where we can handle this. Let's take advantage of the fact that we do have a system. And if we want to read those, let's not, let's also get the professional ends, the professionals that work with us to work with you. If you want to work on that committee, that's fine. Let's get everybody to the table so we can have a lot of opinions rather than one person's opinion. So let's get that small group together to work with that. I want to remind you that we have a legislative group that we work, we go have a legislative work session. We have lobbyists in, in, uh, Tallahassee, that if we really want to make a difference in this, let's take advantage of what the system have, because we have some things in place that if we were to take advantage of them. Okay, I keep saying this to you. We are part of the Central Florida Coalition of School Boards. We are with 850,000 students. Let's take advantage of the fact that we are part of that coalition. Let's take advantage of the fact that we need to bring our ideas to the group, and hopefully we can sway, uh, sway the group to some of the ideas that we have, and then we can move with a, with a voice of 850,000. These are some things that I'm just sharing with you. Some other things that I, I would just like to, to share with you is this. Every opinion is important to us, but we have a system that we need to try and focus these ideas where they can do the most good, and to the committees that can come back to us, whether it's in a work session or whatever, so we can get this thing, uh, moving in the right direction. One of the things I would like to do as chair is make sure we can focus in on things and, and put them in a systematic order. I will tell you this, that the school system been around a long time, and if we want to turn it on a dime, we can, but if we utilize the things that we have put in place, we can. We can. So I don't want people thinking that, "Oh, he's not listening to..." I am listening to you, but I do know that we have a legislative session, a legislative, we have a lobbyist in Tallahassee, we have, uh, a group that meet with legislators all the time, and this is how we can get things done. Yelling at the school board or talking to the school board, let me rephrase that, because I'm sure somebody will say, "He said we yelled at him." No, he didn't. All I heard was a group of people that was concerned about what we were doing. All I know is that we have a system where we can have, um, a maximum impact on what we do if we work and utilize the things that we pay for. And when I say this, we will, we will discuss a consultant that will come to a workshop, okay? We will schedule a workshop where we can sit down and talk about the textbooks. We bring those people in so we can sit around and talk about this. It's not as though we're trying to blindside the community. One thing that always get me, and I have to say this to you, public education is the greatest thing that ever happened to this country. And I know some of you sit around and say, "Oh, no, it's not." Public education is the greatest equalizer in this country. If you have, every kid have an opportunity in America to go to school, what they do with it, that's his choice. And when I sit and I think about public education, I just want you to know, let's confine the parts that we don't like to the parts we don't like, because the same kid that you're sitting next to is a product of public education. And this is one of my big concern, is that we as a board will sit and listen to people that just trash the whole thing when we're talking about a certain part of it. And this is one of the, the things I, as a board member that's been around for a long time, I know people get upset about things, but I also pointed out to you that we have board meetings twice a month, and we have a section in that thing where you can actually come and speak to us and try and say, "Hey, let's work together to try and make this thing work." Because I do not want us, I want people to come out here, and I can't let them applaud because there's so many of them, and they think, "Oh, he's, he's trying to shut me off." All I was trying to do was trying to get everybody to the mic. So this is what this is about to me. I would like to take this time to thank all the people that have listened patiently to me rant for about five minutes. And I want to remind everybody, we're coming up on holidays, and, uh, it's important that we get out there and be, be safe and be, uh, just kind to somebody. Be nice to somebody. It won't hurt. Okay. Okay, here we go. Before aggressive expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received an alternative placement list for students through November 8, 2013. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter?
No.
Saying none. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 14-13 and JD 14-19 with educational service through the first semester of 2014, 2015, uh, school year?
Second.
Whoa. Okay. I have another section to read.
No.
No, okay. It was, it was motion by Ms. Ely, second by Ms. Boynton. Are there any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to expro-, uh, uh, may I, may I have a motion to, to approve the expulsion of student JD 14-10 with educational services through the first semester of 2014, 2015 school year? May I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ely, second by Ms. Boynton. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. That was initially full, wasn't it?
Yes, ma'am.
And it put back yet, okay.
Okay. The motion passed 5-0. Okay. The chair recognized School Board Attorney, Ms. Beverly Morris.
Board members, on behalf of Attorney Mark Levitt with the Law Firm of Allen Norton in Bloom, PA, I am notifying you that advice is needed regarding the pending litigation before the Public Employees Relations Commission, known as PERC, pursuant to Section 286.018 per and eight per in Florida statutes, I have requested a session with the board, the sole purpose of discussing strategy in regard to this litigation. I've asked the board secretary to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this session and the names of the persons attending to be published. As required by this statute, only the superintendent or designee, board members and legal counsel can be present. I've asked a court reporter to record the session, as is also required by statute. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with Brenda Flockhead, her as clerk of the school board. Upon the conclusion of the litigation, the transcript will be made public.
We acknowledge your request. The term appear to be in compliance with the Florida statute. Board members are, have heard our attorney's request, and our chair, I'm announcing an attorney-client session. The statutes state that I also must announce the commencement of the session, the estimated length of the session, and the name of the persons attending. The session will commence as soon as the room is cleared, and the court reporter has set up the following, up following a five-minute recess. It will take approximately one hour. The names of, of the persons attending are Angie Boynton, Ron Crawford, Carol Ely, Bobby James, Nancy Stacy, Superintendent George Tomlin, Attorney Mark Levitt, and Attorney Beverly Morris. I hereby recess the televised and business portion of this meeting at 7:17. We are in recess.